Welcome everyone to the Town of Elon Town Council work session for September 26. As always, we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. So if all who are able will please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Before we get started, I just want to welcome Professor Colin Donahue's media writing course. Thank you all for taking the time to be here as part of your studies and everyone else who is here. And just before we open up the public comment section, if you have a public comment regarding a non-agenda item, please be sure that you have signed in. And then we'll just give it a moment in case you wish to do so. And reminder that the public may speak on any non-agenda item for up to three minutes. Agenda items will only be discussed at its appropriate time. And public hearing items can only be discussed during the public hearing. And then again, be sure that you've signed in. So we will go ahead and open up the public comment section. Jill or Diane, has anyone signed up for public comment?
Yes.
There might be a cross out.
Anyone online? Okay, we will close the public comment section. Moving on to section for ordinances and resolutions. Letter A is the resolution to support the treaty on the prohibition of nuclear weapons. So Rich, could you just give us the synopsis? And I believe we have a guest speaker.
I think we do. And actually, if you don't mind, I'll turn over to Counselor Orwick, who actually had this on the agenda.
I received this call from Ann Kassabom and the peace group that was doing this. And we also have residents here in Elon who were interested in wanting this to be seen by the one town council. And as you probably noted, I'm one of the signatories on the, on the, on this as well. You'll see that many of the signatories are local clergy of people from the area. There has been other localities that have approved this. And I felt it was appropriate for us to deal with it here. And I can speak more to it later after we hear comments, but the resolution is a non-binding resolution. I think that's an important thing to first of all understand. It's more of an idea of creating a level of support for getting to and sending a message from our community and from communities all around our state that we agree with, with the sentiments and the ideas that are represented in this statement. So with that said, I guess I'll just turn it back to you, Madam Mayor, for you to get speakers and then we can speak about it some more.
And who's speaking on behalf of the organization? Can you stand and state your name? And you're welcome to come to the podium.
Hello, everybody. My name is Linda Dunn, and I have lived here in Elon for 45 years now. And so this is an issue that's very important to me. ICANN Treaty basically is a treaty to ban nuclear weapons and to support. So basically, the United Nations has passed a treaty with 122 nations that are voted in favor of this treaty to ban nuclear weapons. Currently, 86 nations are signatories and 66 nations have ratified it. Briefly, it prohibits states, parties from developing, testing, producing, manufacturing, acquiring, possessing, stockpiling, transferring, or receiving nuclear weapons. And so we're just asking the Town of Elon to support this ICANN treaty. They're trying to get communities all across the country to support this so that the United States would letting, letting the country, the people in our country know that this is something that's important to our country as well, because the US has not signed in on this treaty. So, so we're here to ask the Elon community to support this treaty. Why Elon? Why the little town of Elon? Why is this important to us? My passion is peacemaking. I'm a peacemaker. I fell into this training as a peacemaker many years ago. And my friend Ann Kassabom, what we have done in this community, you talk about, if you think Elon is a small place that can't make a difference, we can make a difference. And Kassabom started this peace action group in our community back in the early 80s. And just one of the things she has been able to, because she's passionate about peace, is to study at Elon University, which has trained many students at the university in peacemaking practices and in studying conflict all over the world. I became the director of the Alamance County Dispute Settlement Center. And so my little piece of the action, I, I may be a little person in this community. I am a little person in this community. Most of you have not heard my name. What have I done? I ran a mediation center for 13 years here in the county doing mediation in the court system. And I have mediated thousands of disputes, little old me, mediating thousands of disputes. So do I think the little town of Elon can make a difference by signing this? Yes, we are important. And by endorsing the fact that we think nuclear weapons can be harmful, just a point of fact, you may or may not know that about $400,000 of our money here goes towards making and producing nuclear weapons. You may or may not know that there was an accidental crash of a B-52 in 1961 in Goldsboro where that contained two nuclear bombs. Luckily, they didn't get detonated. But we have about 7,000 nuclear weapons and money that could be used in other places in our community for peacemaking efforts, for making, for education, for all, for many other things that help our families here in Elon. The money could be used in other ways. We aren't asking you to commit the money to anything, to not commit it to nuclear weapons. We just want your endorsement saying that you go along with this, that we need to reduce the number of nuclear weapons that we have and that we need to be concerned about the use of them. When I was working in the mediation center, I was implementing peacemaking programs in the school system. I was teaching conflict resolution, training peer mediators in the schools in the 90s. Did I ever think that someone was going to take a gun, a child was going to take a weapon and use it in the schools? I never dreamed of it. When it happened in 1999, I was horrified. And it took all of our peacemaking, that money was taken away from us because of that action. And money was funneled into police officers in the schools, which I'm not saying that's necessarily wrong. But we focused more on what to do to pre, we didn't, we let go of teaching people other ways of handling conflict. And so this is just another weapon. If we have it, who's to say we're not going to use it? So nuclear weapons may seem boring to you, like no one's going to use it and nothing's going to happen to us. But it's been used in the past. And all it takes is an angry person who has access to these weapons and/or an order for someone, from someone who's upset in the moment. And it can be used. So we just ask you to really seriously consider this. And we think that Elon, I think Elon is a wonderful place for me to live. And I would love to see them take this step towards what I see as a peacemaking effort. So thank you.
I think Barbara was gonna.
Hi, I'm Barbara Clausen. When Mikes, I've been there for 22 years. And even though our address is Burlington, Elon is our home. This is where we vote for some crazy reason. I won't try to say what it is because I'm not sure. But anyway, you are my town council. I am among those who will remember that this is the 77th anniversary of the atomic bombings in Hiroshima. And I was like, when I was an exchange student in Japan in 1957, a long time ago, I visited a bomb dome, the shell of one of the few buildings that survived the bombing. You may have seen a picture of that in Hiroshima. My most haunting memory was going to a place where victims of the bomb, survivors of the bomb, who were unable to live independently. As I was taken from room to room, my Japanese host asked me to speak to them. I have no idea what I said. I only know that this was one of the most difficult moments in my life. I had to struggle to be able to say anything. I was overwhelmed with the fact and the action my country has done and what was there for me. Forty-seven years later, when I returned to Hiroshima, I spent considerable time in the museum, which portrayed a great detail, in great detail, what had happened on August 6, 1945. I was stunned and horrified to see the impact of the bomb so graphic. And bombs now are much more deadly than those were. My pledge to myself as I left the museum and the city was to do whatever I could to work for the elimination of nuclear weapons. One thing I can do is urge you to support the UN treaty on the prohibition of nuclear weapons by signing ICANN City Appeal. Colin Powell has said, quote, "The one thing that I convince myself of after all these years of exposure to the use of nuclear weapons is that they were useless. They cannot be used. If you can have deterrence with an even lower number of weapons, why stop there? Why not get rid of them altogether?" And of course, their existence is a threat to all of us in the earth's environment. And the amazing thing is that you, the town council of Elon, along with other councils in the Piedmont area, can actually do something about this. I look forward to the day when the eternal flame burning in the peace bar is extinguished. That would mean no more nuclear weapons exist.
Open it up. Comments, questions from the board?
I appreciate you sharing your description of what you did as a young student in Japan was amazing. And I appreciate you sharing that with us. I can't imagine what that must have been like for you. And obviously, it holds a significant part of who you are and in your heart going forward. So we appreciate that you were sharing that with us today. Thank you very much.
I just want to say that I was getting ready to be ordained as a pastor. I was a United Methodist pastor at the time, going in the United Methodist Church. And we have to answer a question. We had answered a question. Are you going on to perfection? And we all laughed. How in the world can we be perfect? It's impossible for us to. And there was this retired bishop there who was very quiet for listening to our snickering and all of our talk. Finally said, "If you're not going on to perfection, then what are you going on to?" I believe a resolution like this is not something that we need to be involved in. We don't have to say anything more than yes. And as we give that support, what we're saying is, is that in the whole scheme of things, it would be smarter for us not to have nuclear weapons. We don't have to create any ordinances. We don't have to do anything. It's a non-binding resolution. It says that we might add another little voice that would say that something like nuclear weapons is really not needed. We're being threatened right now by, by Russia. And we're all probably wondering, what does that even look like? But the impossibility of it is not that impossible. And so the idea of us just making a statement, a simple statement, is important. One of the reasons I ran for this position was I sat on the other side of this table making those speeches for ordinances and for resolutions that you guys would never pass. And I feel now I'm on this side of the table and I'm going to vote yes and vote no. But if I'm not going on the anti-nuclear, then I'm not going on. That's how I feel about it. I know that my country and will make their best decisions and will do the things that they need to do. But this is one chance that we have to say as a community what I think's the right thing.
I want to thank Ms. Clausen and Ms. Dunne for both showing up and your passion. It's to be commended. Anytime something of this magnitude comes to, to, to the forefront, you have to ask yourself, why hasn't it happened? If it was simple as that, it would have happened. You wouldn't be here. And I think there's more underlying reasons that sometimes we forget. I don't think anyone in this room is for nuclear warfare. I don't think anybody does. But it's, I think what we have realized since Hiroshima is that the threat to protect the sovereignty of our country, nuclear weapons have been imperative. You know, there's been a chemical ban on the use of chemical warfare for 20 years, yet we still see it happening. So it means that it sounds good that people sign, there's a treaty, but until everyone abides by it, it's like jumping off a cliff into a, to a, to a lake. You want to be the first one to give up, jump in, or you want to wait to see what everyone else does? And I think that's where our country is at a point where do we want to become vulnerable to a country that doesn't want to abide by that treaty? So it's like a standstill. What, who's going to make the first move? Do you want the United States to give up our weapons in the hopes that other countries are going to follow? I know that I don't. I'd like the United States to be the last, last country to participate and give up. Because there's going to be one country, as we've seen in Russia, attacking the Ukraine. We have no control over Russia. Unless it's just a kind of threat. I think we want to send soldiers over there. But I think what we have done is used that as a, as a security blanket to protect our interests, our country's interests. So, you know, resolutions are just symbolic. They don't do a lot. I've yet to see a resolution that's changed action on anybody. I mean, it continues. And you can support it. I think you can support anything. And I think that's what we try to do. But at our level, I just kind of question, is it, is it just symbolic?
Can we respond to that?
Presenters, right? Allowed to ask questions of the presenters? We have a new town attorney, so we're working with new rules about.
New, not me.
Not the town attorney.
Working with new advice from the attorney. And I think, you know, we've had an opportunity for the public to comment and make the presentation. I think this is your deliberation. So I, you know, yes, you can open it back up to the public if you choose to, but you know, I think that, you don't, you're not required to.
Okay, we're going to open it up to public comments on this particular item. If you'll just stand and say your name and your address, please.
Yes, Ann Kassabom, Elon. And I think that's what you're, you're saying is based on a misunderstanding. When you endorse this statement, you're not being asked to dismantle the weapons or carry on the negotiations that would lead to mutual disarmament. This is a worldwide movement. It is not something the US does unilaterally. And I, I think you might like us going back to Reagan, who said, trust but verify. And no nuclear weapons are much more easy to verify than the spread of nuclear weapons we've seen since Hiroshima.
Have anyone else who would like to share on this topic?
Just have a question, Madam Mayor. I, with this being a work session, I almost had in my mind that we were talking about it and then vote on it at the next meeting, but it looks like this is meant to be signed tonight. So, I think we're going to vote tonight.
Yeah, we have the option to vote if we wish. You know, I think that, from my point of view, you've heard me say this to you when you've been on this other side, is that I don't want to pass anything that's performative. I want to pass something that we can actually do something about. And that's what I think I want to know, is what can we do? I don't want to just say something. I want to know what we can actually do. How can we, as a town board, actually take action on this? And that's what I need to understand, because I, I get the whole picture. I think everyone up here would agree that a world with no nuclear weapons is a world that we want to be in. But at the same time, we're dealing with, what we're dealing with on the global scale where action could be taken against us at any moment. And, you know, that's my biggest concern. So I, I see it, I see both sides. Well, I don't think there's any both sides. I think everyone agrees that a world with no nuclear weapons is the best world to be in. But I want to do something. I don't want to sign a piece of paper that's performative. I want to know what I can do. And so there are nuclear-free zones that other towns have passed. From what I can find, not another North Carolina town has passed this resolution.
Asheville and actually Green Level. And others, it's under consideration, I think, in 12, or 12 councils in the Piedmont. I don't know.
So, you know, for me, I think I would like for us to look at, maybe we establish a nuclear free zone in the Town of Elon, because I feel like that's at least something we can control.
Nuclear weapon reason.
It's not just nuclear weapon free zone. It's also that we're not going to produce nuclear weapons in the Town of Elon. We're not going to support, there's 21 different businesses. Let me find them. And we have no public investments in any of the 26 companies that make nuclear weapons. We've not purchased products or services from those 26 companies. I mean, not saying that's what we do, but I think that those are things that we should look at so that we are actually taking some form of action that's not just performative. That's important to me.
Let's be clear, Madam Mayor. You want to do that, but you don't want to say yes? Or you don't want us to even vote on this?
And take a vote.
From a procedural standpoint, you can do that and as well as say yes to this resolution. That's what I was trying to get at. So I guess what I'm trying to say is, is that, I don't know if people will change their votes if they wait for a couple of weeks, and that's fine. I'd rather wait till the next meeting, because I think that's just.
I didn't plan to.
But, but, but I want to vote on this resolution.
So we'll move that one item. And also, if we can just research what else has been done. So I can send you all the information that I have up as well.
Are you interested in having those steps added to the resolution?
Um, or we can collectively draft something to review at our next meeting as well. That might be an alternative resolution or.
Additional.
An additional.
I mean, the point is, this treaty was developed in 2018. So, wait. It's a vote? Did you really thought that? And I appreciate your comments, because I think we need to intend, intend of what it is just to create a resolution that we have no ability as a town to move forward. It just puts it on paper. I don't think it has any impact, as opposed to other resolutions that you presented and others have presented. Make a difference in our town, in our country.
Pass them though, so.
I'm still waiting on that new sustainability resolution to be developed by our sustainability committee. So if anyone would like to join our sustainability committee, you can go to townofelon.com and register as a volunteer.
I appreciate your comments. I appreciate everybody's comments. And I understand where you're coming from, Mayor, about performative action. But I do agree with performative action, but I disagree that this is just performative and symbolic. You think, right, if we do just put our name, just say yes to it, right? It can come across as symbolic and performative, and this is what we're doing. Our name is the first of what we have here, 11. But then there's a million names after us. We've got some, I think there's action that is moved by it. I don't think it's not creating action. But I also understand Monty's. I don't want to get rid of everybody else's going to come at us, but then I go back to the simple fact of, you know, not a firearms fan. I don't think fighting fire with fire is what needs to be. And ultimately, so when this came before us, man, I don't know what to do. You know, you know, I've spoken to some of you about it. I don't just want to, I just wave a symbol flag. But, you know, I really appreciate your comments, Randy, starting out that, I think that's ultimately kind of, I'm not moving forward with something, what am I standing for? So I do appreciate that. I do agree. I'd like to talk more and research more about it, see what the town, like your idea about mayor, but something making Elon up.
So would you be in agreement if we maybe took some of the verbiage of the ICANN resolution and built our own?
I would be willing to take a vote on this and then do an additional work. This, I believe this is actually. This, I believe this is action oriented in the sense that we would be added to a list of country that would go toward moving this forward. And it may be a very slow movement, but at least it would be one that would be here. And I think, you know, being in a place where Elon University is, and there's a place of learning here, I think that this would inspire people in this community to understand that, that we do believe in something, and we want to be a part of it. I'm not, I think the arguments that we're hearing here is by taking away from this, is that you would never then, you would not be passing the ICAN statement. And again, that's what I feel like we are doing, what we're being asked to do here. We want to go ahead and, and work toward a nuclear-free zone, or any, any other of those kinds of peace actions, I'm all for it. But I don't want to take this one apart in order to try to do something that we think might be better, because this is a prob, this is a situation that was already set for, is already in motion. So I, I would, I would just advocate for something additional if you want to do it, but I really want to vote on this resolution.
I have a very quick comment. I mean, this is a chance for us to show our leadership. So it really doesn't matter to me that other, you know, there are some places that have passed this resolution. I want to see us join in that leadership. And into just, to be a community that shows the way to others that we're, we're supporting this. And yes, is it taking, is, is it taking a risk? Yeah, there's, there's a little bit of risk there, but do we want to set an example? Or do we want to, you know, stay back and not show our, you know, show our leadership and our support, and where we really, you know, what do we believe about the importance of humanity and, you know, not harming each other? If that's, if that's what we believe, you know, there's just so much violence escalating. We just had a shootout in, you know, in Elon, you know, so you know, the, the more we can support and take a leadership role and a stand on some of these things that may seem far away, but it's still our voices being heard, and it may add to other voices. And so that we, that we, we didn't wait. We thought it was important enough to just move forward, to be a leader in the state and in the country.
In terms of the resolution itself, I mean, this is not the ICAN resolution. This is one that pertains specifically to us. So why couldn't we rewrite it to be more aligned with?
I mean, to be fair, we didn't have a, an ICAN resolution. We had a list of statements.
We have a resolution to support UN Treaty on the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons.
And it's there in the tablics.
So we would be writing something new to pass regardless.
So you're saying?
There's nothing in here.
Resolution, if the resolution also said for, let's see, I just want to make sure we got it right.
Down at the bottom. Therefore, or be.
It's our support for the treaty. Okay, so if we, if that stays intact, and in addition, you want to add something that would speak about nuclear-free zone, yes, I would be open to that. I just want to make sure that we're not trying to, to water down or to say that we're never going to really vote on this support. I want to go on record, I'm hoping that ultimately our town can go on record as being one of those localities that adds their voice to the town. The whole reason I brought it to us.
Oh, okay. If everyone is okay with that, I'd like to work with the town clerk and the town manager on writing something that pertains more to our town for a vote in our next meeting. Okay, with everyone, it will include that statement.
Okay, that's all I, that's all I care about, at this moment, because when you brought that up, if that sounds like, that, that might take a little more time than it might just for a couple of weeks, because there may be implications with the university. I don't know what their research were doing or anything else. I don't know if there's companies, if we even have any work with these companies, and I don't know how long it would take you to find out if there's reason why we would need to do business with these companies and these localities in our locality. That's, that's what worried me. When you said that, I thought, I, I love the idea of it, but I just want to make sure we're not doing anything that's going to hurt ourselves too. Again, and I think really spoke about it best, this is a process, and it's about mutual disarmament. It's not about unilateral disarmament. And that's all we've, that's what we've always been looking.
So we'll move that item to the agenda for our regular meeting in October. Thank you all so much for being here. Great. Next item on the agenda, fiscal year 23 budget amendment number two. Are you presenting that?
Yes, I am. Used to, by saying back this past spring, as we were putting it in the budget. Told you that. And sooner rather than later, we realized it wasn't perfect. In, in, in various machinations, the realized that the budget line for compensation insurance premiums for the fire department have been left out of the budget. So we need to add that in. That is about $36,300. While that, when that came, our rec, our, our, we recognized that, and we were preparing to do that, we also received notice that we received two grants. Was for the Fire Department of Environmental Quality, $3,000 grant to work on detecting and mapping copper issues with our water distribution system. We know what we're dealing with and can develop a plan to remediate that. That $300,000 has to be added into our revenue budget and then added into our expense budget, so that would be another amendment. And finally, we received an NCU part of transportation grant to do a multimodal network plan, looking at transportation within Elon, like pet transit primarily. Again, that is a, it'll be a $48,000 grant, which we will have to match with $12,000 for our own money. So that would be the third item with this budget amendment. That's something we could certainly do in October, if that's how you want to have. I apologize, I was.
Yeah, I don't have a resolution agenda.
Yeah, I'm not sure what happened to it, because it was all put together, but unless I just forgot to attach it.
Okay, so.
We wouldn't pass it till next time anyway.
Because you'll want to see the actual document.
Any, any questions? I know we don't have it all in front of us right now, but.
Change from previous year for workers' compensation.
I was it was a couple hundred dollars maybe for the fire department. It might have been $36,000 to $36,300. I mean, it wasn't a significant increase. It was, it was just in the process of moving it from requested and recommended, you know, back and forth, somehow it got zeroed out under my recommendation.
There, question?
Yes, let it be known to our Elon students that even sometimes, when your homework does not complete it, you go back to your professor and say, see, it just inadvertently was deleted.
You can put it on the next agenda. All right, thanks, Rich. Okay, moving on to old business. Old business, yet new business, right? So our downtown social district, and I believe Jill, our downtown director, is going to give us an update. For those of you who this is your first time hearing about this, this is our fourth. Our fifth.
Fourth meeting.
Fourth meeting.
On this topic.
Give us the Cliff Notes version?
Yes, the Cliff Notes version is, we've had quite some discussion about having a social district in downtown Elon, and and what that is, is a district that allows, just since we have so many here tonight, so that allows open container drinking from a, from a restaurant to carry it along the sidewalk within the district to our, I mean, one of three dining or event areas. So that's been, a lot of downtowns have started doing this, because during COVID, we have special ordinance in which all the downtowns were allowed to do this in order to keep business, business thriving by letting them serve in out, temporary outdoor dining areas. Of course, we made a lot of our temporary outdoor dining areas are now permanent, and we've placed a lovely mural in one of them, so. Anyway, that's just a quick synopsis. At the last meeting, which was the 13th, was the public hearing in which the audience and those who wanted to make their comments were allowed to do so. Some of the details that came out of that meeting were, that the council reviewed comments that were given by the audience, and there were a lot of discussion about police citations and what would happen in different scenarios. And unfortunately, I am not a police officer, so I'm not first in some of those things. And so I had to ask Kelly if she would join us this evening to talk about some of those things we were concerned about, if somebody leaves the district with a drink going into the pedestrian areas and the parking areas and so forth. So once I finished my presentation, I was going to ask Kelly to come up. Actually, Rich and I jotted down notes from the last meeting and hopefully at least answer the questions from the last meeting or whatever else you might have. So in, in a nutshell, you had asked me to come back with an updated social district map, which I think, if you could pull that up. And really, the only change to the map was eliminating Holt Avenue from that, and we had discussion about, really, there wasn't a lot on that backside, and to try to keep it where, you can see that, see there, there we go, everything in green would be a part of the social district. One of the other things that you wanted to see was that the parking lots and alleyways were excluded, which you can clearly see now, and you can't see the notation, it's kind of small. But it says it's designated social district in green, so it's showing the buildings and the sidewalks. If you zoom in, you can see the sidewalks. And then it shows the two dining areas in which we are allowing them to, to have their drinks in. And then the, the other thing was the specific questions that you had for Kelly. So that will be, I'll ask her to come up in just one moment, but I wanted to go ahead and give you just the proposed option to approve the revised map that's there for the social district and approve the ordinance, and that has also been adjusted to the things we discussed at the last meeting.
Can we just ask a question about the, um, the northern outdoor dining area? Are we not extending into the lawn at all?
We are waiting to hear back from the church if that's going to happen or not. So as of right now, in order to move it forward, it's not included. And maybe Randy could possibly give us an update. I'm not sure.
No more, no more information than you have.
We are where we are.
Rich and, and the trustees have been the ones in.
And we have a meeting scheduled tomorrow or the next day to, to follow up on that discussion.
I think it's just, just to not hold it up so we can keep moving forward and then we can.
But the social district could be expanded or reduced at any point in time.
Right, it's just, and all you simply have to do is turn in a map to the ABC. For example, if you can get this additional building on the backside, or we have an area that's expanded, we have more restaurants and breweries, and we want to do that at a later time. I think I'd mentioned at the last meeting, this is one of the smallest social districts out of any of the towns that I've seen, and there are several that have them now.
But it significantly covers every place that we really need to be.
Yes.
At this point, and I think, I really, and I was very pleased to see this. I thought you did a really good job.
I didn't do, I give all credit to Mary Catherine. She worked on that map on Friday. So she's not here tonight, but she worked on that, and we really, to make sure that all those parking lots were, were clearly excluded.
Jill, I had one question. In, in the ordinance, and it kind of, an email we got from Ms. Webb is here tonight. Thank you for coming. I have the question about, where does that get incorporated as far as the, the legalities about the size of the cups, the quantities, et cetera? Is that dictated by the ABC, which is separate from this district, or does it have to be included?
It's, it's all a part of it. So the way it is now is.
See it here as well as.
Well, it's, yeah, it's not in, in our ordinance, what, what the ABC requires.
So how would some, I guess that's my question. How would someone know?
So all the businesses will be given all that information, what rules they have.
And that's dictated by the state.
It is.
Yes, the state has established those standards.
Yes.
General can be more strict than the state if we choose to. Part of the ordinance also has, has a management maintenance plan that staff will have to put together. So a lot of those details will be in that plan that will be part of the our, your vision, like a QR code on the signs, so that, for on the, maybe even on the cups, so that people can check it and get all the rules and regulations.
So I was hoping to have that tonight. That's where you said, ask that question, because we're going to be asked to vote on it. There's been a lot of criticism about our town.
I think I gave that maybe probably the very first time we talked about this. Yeah, all the specifics, I don't have it, no, because like I said, that was quite a while ago. But it was 16, no more than two, it's just really what the law is now, no more than two drinks.
And the state can change that.
This is better than me. No more than two drinks within an hour. They're very, very specific about the social district cub. It has to be clear. It has to be in 12 points on. It has to say, must be 21, must have the social, social district sticker on there. It's very specific.
I would like that to be more transparent, so people knew what those rules were, so that they don't have to go look at the same website.
We, it would be, it would be on that QR code. Like I said, I think I presented the very, very first time we did this.
Yeah, because we saw examples of all the signage.
All the wording exactly obviously requires, which is the same for everyone, but I could certainly send you another copy of that.
If we go back to our notebook, I think.
Yeah, probably the very first or second one.
Suggesting, Monty, that this, that be written in our.
Well, it's not. We just talked about the social district without, absent of what what we're referring to as far as suspension, dispensing of alcohol, what the restrictions are and.
But all of, those aren't our rules. That's the ABC rules.
Yeah, none of the ordinance have those in them.
To that.
Well, what does the social district mean if you don't know what, do we have social?
Well, I mean.
That's in our ordinance.
Yeah, as far as consumption.
The numbers that you see on there, those refer to that specific ordinance, you know, state.
Accordance.
And we can certainly add the reference chapter and verse to state statute, if that would make things clearer.
Yeah.
And again, it'll also be part of the management plan that we, we write up.
I mean, this space, if people go around drinking, they're always, use a QR code, they know what those rules are, and so, you know, however we publish it and post it, it needs to be obvious.
Well, and some of it, I mean, really is the responsibility of the restaurants, you're just like it is now.
Right.
Yeah, and they need to be versed in it, which I feel is my job to make sure they have, and that, and it has changed a little bit. I think I shared that at the last meeting. You know, it's, it's morphing as, as more and more towns are doing it. One of the things that most recently came up was, okay, if you have a special event in that social district, you still want outside vendors to have to have a permit to be in that district if they're not a restaurant. Nobody really thought about that before, but right, if you're having a big festival, you want other outside vendors to make sure that they have the proper permit, so they've added that. So it's continually morphing and changing.
I really appreciate what you've done, what Mary Catherine did as far as, you know, clearing up the map. The only thing that concerns me is the green part where we have the beautiful dining hearing now extends into the road, and I don't know if that was just not the, the ability to move it down, but I just get concerned that students aren't going to go, or, or just, you know, residents aren't going to go down to where they can cross the street on either side. They're just going to go straight from, you know, McGurk's or Tangent or the route and just run across the street to where the dining areas, and especially if we've.
That's what they do.
But do we want that to be where we've made a point of saying?
We had a conversation about that, about the idea that there's no crosswalk. There's no legal crosswalk there, and there's no ability, well, at least there doesn't seem to be a seeming responsibility. So we had talked about the possibility of adding kind of like some cross lines there, so that people, as people do walk across the street, that people would be extra careful driving in there.
It's a state road. So we can add a crosswalk anywhere we want.
Or we can add.
Not a crosswalk.
We can add a grid.
Yeah, we could add a grid.
My main concern was just, if we're voting on this and we have it highlighted in green, then we are, we are setting the expectation that it's okay, in my mind, perhaps I'm wrong. And you all know that I have missed meetings, so if this has been brought up, then please forgive me for that. But it's just showing that, you know, if, if you have a student that's wanting to be a lawyer or something like that, well, it says right there, I can stand in the middle of the road. This is, this is the part. Now, maybe I'm exaggerating, I don't know, but I, that was just my only concern when I saw the, the whole green area.
I think right now it's just that we don't. I think right now it's just that we don't have a designated area that, hey, you have to cross here. So right now it's including until we figure out exactly. And that's what they have, uh, we're doing during.
Mayor, it seems like we're in some, we're in some kind of a I'm talking, discussing, and we were supposed to hear from the chief. Any chance we could hear from the chief first? Because it sounds like some of these things may be.
As Jill pointed out, I did get some questions. So do you want me to answer the questions that they kind of presented? The first one that I was asked about is if a person has an empty, an empty cup and they've left the social district, how do we plan to proceed with that? And the fact of the matter is, if they bought the cup at a restaurant, souvenir cups are the same way, and it's empty. Nothing. It's their property, provided they're not violating any ABC rules, any violations of ABC law. We would just not enforce anything. I mean, there's nothing to do. Now, again, if it's got just a little bit of beer in the bottom, that's a violation. And I I kind of look at that as establishing a new protocol, new ordinance requires some, some level of education, some leeway and warnings, things like that. Just like when we change a traffic pattern, we don't instantly go out and start enforcing the rules as it is in black and white, but we try to do some sort of campaign to mitigate that and and educate prior to enforcement. So I, again, I think that's how we would handle that before citations issued. If an underco, or an underage drinker is caught drinking within the social district with a social district cup, who's liable, the person who handed the drink to them, the business underage drinkers. And that's a little bit more complex. Obviously, if you're underage and you're in possession of an alcoholic beverage, regardless of where you are, that's a citation. That's enforceable. But we would also investigate who sold the beverage. If they are marked, like Jill said, and it comes from the last known restaurant, we're going to go back. And again, we're going to establish an investigation. If we're able to determine then the bartender, not necessarily the restaurant, however they want to do that. I mean, ABC permits are included or attached to that, but the bartender will be cited for those. Type of citation that's given to underage drinker in a social district will be the same as any other underage drinking ticket, which is a class one misdemeanor citation. Then specifically, what ti, what time of day specifically are most citations written? And this was specific to student drinking, but we just looked at all drinking, because this isn't to establish whether students are going to behave well or forty age, forty year old, middle aged women are gonna, you know, respond appropriately in those conditions. And quite frankly, if we're making the district ten AM to ten PM, we see, you know, darties, day parties in the spring and the nicer weathers. Generally anywhere from noon till four or fiveish. And that's just in generalities, of course. Evening parties usually don't really, we don't really see foot traffic till maybe eleven, ten, eleven. And that could run all the way up to three AM. So if they're not shut down first. Next question, how many citations have been given since outdoor dining areas have been allowed to drink for the past two years, specifically in those areas, as you see marked in green? We also included all of West College. Just because, well, it was just easier to differentiate. So what I did is I took two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-two, we had three citations, period. In that timeframe, not ten to ten AM to, but in 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 general, from we had one, we had two in two thousand twenty-one. They were between the hours of ten fifty to two thirty AM. We had another one. Most, the most recent was during our saturation patrol in nine two, it was at ten fifty-two. So it was.
Outside of the hours of the social district.
That's, yeah, I mean, yeah, correct. Yes, sir. And then I also went back and looked at two thousand seventeen to two thousand nineteen, just pre-COVID. We had five, and they were between eleven AM and one thirty AM. Trying to, trying to look at.
AM?
I'm sorry. Yes, eleven AM to one thirty AM the following morning. And it looks like we had one, January fifth nineteen or twenty nineteen at eight, four oh eight PM, and then another on November in two thousand nineteen at eleven AM. The rest were in the morning hours, anywhere between twelve and one thirty. So those are the only questions I was kind of presented as it may come up again tonight. So I'm going to answer any other questions if I can.
Well, Stephanie is is raised, and there's others that keep raising that it's a free for all on Lebanon, never keep those, these state Lebanon. I mean, I drive there a lot, and I do see people, you know, crossing all parts of the road because they're coming from their cars. Have you had an order, an amount of people being hit by a car, of accidents or anything like that in that particular block than other areas of Elon?
No, the only, the only thing that really comes to mind on the spot is a gentleman, I think, on a bicycle was hit in the downtown area, but it wasn't, it wasn't. He was in traffic, a car nudged him. There was no, no serious injury, but it wasn't pedestrian related. I mean, again, that's going off of just my memory in the last couple of years. I mean, obviously, there's a lot of foot traffic coming through town on a Saturday, especially a beautiful spring Saturday. There's several parties going on further back in the block. I think folks go, they drink, they come, it's it's time to come to dinner. They come down to downtown and enjoy our restaurants. And again, it's it is a little different as far as maybe the behaviors prior to, but it's really no different to the foot traffic that you see where else in Elon at crosswalks. That particular area is, is it is difficult. You brought up the, you know, the question about the the dining area. You know, that that will be a challenge. And I think the, you guys have some great ideas about how to mitigate that. Because obviously, crossing the street is a lot different than walking down the street, impeding traffic with with alcoholic beverages. That just kind of takes a whole nother, takes it to a whole nother level, but there's no place for folks to cross the street to go to Subway, cross the street to go to the route. So that will be a challenge. Chief, would there be a problem? I mean, since it's not in green, if they did the went down to the crosswalks on either side, they're not going to get stopped if they're headed across the street to go over to the dining area. I think we can probably, just as long as it's well marked. Of course, they're not, people aren't going to go down to the corner to cross over to come down. It ain't going to happen. I'm just thinking. Yeah, it's not going to happen. That's going to create more of a, an extent sinewy and circumstantial. We're going to contact them a lot more than if we did something right there in the green that indicated this is the safe zone. This is part of the social district. In fact, this roadway part, that's going to give us a little bit more advantage as far as making sure we don't have undue contact because of something that no one is going to abide by. And I mean, no, you know, so. Any other questions I can answer? Thank you.
Any other questions for Jill? Rich? Folder. I will just share, um, here in web, with the Element Citizens for a Drug Free Community did email us with a public comment. Just asking that we do consider limiting to one drink at a time to a single patron and limiting the size of the drink to twelve ounces of beer or five ounces of wine. I just want to make sure that's in our public record as well. And I think that we all received that email from her.
I'm going to just go on. Minister, it's going to go on. It's still, this is laughable, but but the United Church of Christ is not a teetotaling denomination, so we.
Party rousers.
But I just, I guess I really want to utilize record that's already present. Why we believe that that that's going to change. And since we have the right to revoke this at any time, I would be much more open to that than thinking that something could possibly happen down the road, and we better not ever do anything. My sense is, is that this is a, very well thought out and well done. And I just feel like it's ready to, ready to go, ready to roll. And then we can watch and see, but the record is already there. We already have had a record given to us as a gift from the terrible pandemic, but it was there, but and I just don't see us seeing any big difference in behavior. Now, obviously, we have concerns about and the police, I think, are doing an excellent job trying their best to to curb the kinds of other drinking behaviors that can be dangerous. And and they've done that, but I think most of that's outside of this district anyway. So, so my, my sense is, is that this is a positive move, and I think we should go for it.
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree with you, Randy. You know, this is, you said at last meeting, this, this is not new. We've been doing this for almost two and a half years. I don't think it's going to cause more drunkenness in the town. Where you got to get the alcohol from and how it's going. And mainly, too, if we don't, if we continue deliberating this, we're putting our businesses at risk. Because as it is, right, can't, can't be doing it. But, you know, we, we have people enjoying our outside dining areas all the time. And so for us to really, you know, if we're going to keep deliberating this, and it's going to get to a point where we need to go to all the businesses and be like, stop everything. And so I'm, I'm, I'm ready for it. I appreciate Jill putting this so people can see. We can play semantics with this map all day, plus, you know, people are going to walk diagonally from McGurk's over to the area two, and that's not in green. It's going to be fine. People are going to make it over to their, to the, to the dining area. People aren't going to go in the parking lots, and if they do, it's nothing new. It's nothing new. And if this is what we have to do to allow something that has been beneficial to our town, I don't know, you know, if y'all have came down and seen the music to dine to on Friday nights, that area is so much fun. We have people coming in from Burlington area and Gibsonville area, coming to our town, spending money in our, in our restaurants. And it's just a fun family atmosphere. And, you know, I think this is something that will continue that and we can build on. And in six months of having this pass, we're all going to know the rules. And then it's just going to keep moving forward, just like we know how to, if people order alcohol inside of a restaurant. This, it's, this isn't a crazy idea that's never been thought of. And back to, to Randy again, saying, if it doesn't work and we're seeing issues with it, we'll stop it. Stop it. It's as simple as that. They're like, I know this is our work session, but we can vote on this tonight if we wanted to, correct, Rich?
Yes.
Yeah, this is.
Well, I make a motion to move forward with it.
Okay, I have a motion. I have a second.
Second.
Any additional discussion?
And you both summed it up pretty well. I think it's an opportunity to continue something we've been doing. Be in the best interest of the town. Stop it, stop it, the town. We have to, uh, whether you agree with it or not, there's a lot of criticism I've read about, they were crazy, but, you know, the citations that you mentioned, five in two years, pre-pandemic, and after that, three, three. So, um, I think we have a lot, I mean, I think sometimes people don't give young people credit.
That's right.
I'm more concerned about the, the parties that go certain neighborhoods where they're walking down the sidewalks and, you know, create problems for our law enforcement, try to determine what their state of mind is and what are they consuming, are they just staggering? As opposed to adults who distribute and monitor the, the sale of alcohol. That's me, I feel better about that than when their friends giving an eighteen year old or underage person beverage to walk in, or worse, getting in the car. I think it's a, it's an opportunity for us to continue doing what we've done.
Okay, just before we do take a final vote, I want to thank everybody for their comments. And I do think that this is a way to drink probably more safely than a dirty, as I like to say. Um, you know, it's, it's a controlled environment. They are there in an area that is going to be released, you know, essentially. Um, I have been in these social districts in Ohio where it's been a thing since, you know, before COVID. I've been to a couple of towns here in North Carolina who already have this in place. They already have the signage up, and they love it. Um, and, you know, we've been doing it, like we've said, for two and a half years without issue necessarily, and it's pretty family friendly. You know, like, to be able to sit outside, and we do still have residents who aren't comfortable eating inside of a restaurant. So, you know, if they can sit outside and if they choose to have an alcoholic beverage, then, you know, as long as they're adults over the age of twenty-one, then they're certainly able to do that. And, you know, I understand the risks, you know, but someone could go in and drink six beers somewhere and walk to their car and have that same risk. But again, if if they're doing it within the social district, they have to have that controlled environment. There's a limit on the number of drinks. There's, you know, a limit on what can be there. And I don't want to put people at risk who were used to doing this for two and a half years. And they probably don't know that it expired on August fifteenth. And so from August fifteenth until we have things in place, there are going to be people at risk who have no idea that the rules have changed. And, you know, and it's families. If, like Quinn said, when you come downtown on Friday evenings, Thursday evenings, it's families down here, and it's bringing together the various communities. It's Twin Lakes people, it's Elon students, it's families within the area, all coming together, and that's what we want. So I, I certainly support it. I don't have a vote, but I verbally support it. And.
Yeah, my concerns weren't that I don't support it. I do support it. I just thought that that was something that we might want to just keep an eye on as we go forward. So it wasn't. The hard work has been done, certainly, by our folks. So that's not something I don't support. I just on the top of the mind, something that I think we need to be have an eye on, which I'm sure we will.
And I think, too, it's important for us, if if we see this happening down the road, then there's a lot of investment that has to go into it. The signage, the branding, all of that is going to take time and effort and money. And I would hate for Jill to put time, effort, and money into something if we've decided, you know, two months from now not to pass it. So I think that having a response to her is better sooner than later. Yes, Rich?
I guess I'll go back to the management maintenance plan, so that some of the things that we've talked about tonight, pavement markings. You know, size of cups, number of cups. We've talked along about beer and wine only, not liquor. That kind of information will go into the management plan. That you'll, I, I give it the weight of ordinance, you probably, we'll probably bring that to you for adoption as a, as an attachment to this. And that is certainly a way to be be flexible in how it gets managed over time by changing that to, you know, say.
To, you know, say, having to go in and change the ordinance every time there's something new comes up. But that's where we can accommodate some of the comments that we've heard tonight. I actually just sent Donnie an email asking about what can we do with the pavement there to define where we want people to cross as opposed to the whole length of the street or trying to convince people to walk all the way down to the corner in the commode, that kind of thing. So that's, that's a, that's a tool we will have to. To to make it clear what it is we intend that that's not in the ordinance.
Can I just make one comment? Will the ordinance that I actually signed be cleaned up a little bit? There's a lot of spacing issues. Like hole gaps on the page. It might just be the PDF version of like. Yours is good? Must be the PDF version.
Cause it's pretty.
Okay, alright, alright. Have a motion, I have a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Letter B, May Property Donation. Lori? Thank you all.
Thank you.
So Mayor, members of the board, the May Property Donation, I know it was on your June twenty seventh agenda. That was my first day with the town. I don't know if you received it prior to that. I do know that the property owner contacted the town back in twenty twenty one and expressed interest in donating three parcels to the town. In honor of William Henry May, the May Hosiery Mills began in nineteen twenty two. It was eventually merged with the Burlington Mills in nineteen forty seven. Um, and the property is in a state, and so those folks want to donate three parcels, which equals to about five point three six acres to the town.
Just want to do that because we wanted to mention that Elon defeated William and Mary this last week.
And they're now ranked twenty third.
I know, this is great.
So there are the three parcels. They are all currently located outside of the municipal boundaries of Elon. One is located within the extraterritorial jurisdiction. It's zoned NR, so it is in our zoning jurisdiction and planning jurisdiction. And the other two parcels are located in the unzoned area of Alance County. Those parcels. That's August. Those parcels would be contiguous to municipal boundaries should the town choose to accept the land donation and to move forward with possible installation. So the town manager and I visited the parcels back in the early part of September. I took several pictures, but they were all heavily wooded and you'd be looking at trees and not really knowing the difference between the three parcels. One of them did have a rather large creek, dry creek, I found that on the parcel. And we noticed a sign down in the woods, and I made Rich climb down there and take a picture of it.
In my dress slacks and a shirt and tie, just so you know.
I was in a boot, so I made him walk down there and it said no trespassing. City of Burlington, but I figured we were okay. And so we took a picture of the sign. I reached out to the city of Burlington Engineering Department. Found out likely suspected that there was a sewer outfall on the parcel in a thirty foot wide sewer easement. So I included that email in your documentation that said the city would allow passive, non-motorized trails would be permissible within that easement, which is very common across the state. If you go and. Greenways and easements, they're all often following sewer easements. So the twenty forty, there's, Matt, can we zoom back out just a little? Yes, just a smidge. We can capture all three parcels. Right at the southern side, and we really need a laser that shows up on the TV, because mine doesn't. I'm a pointer, but you can see.
It's interesting, those pointers don't work on TV.
I know, but I've had pointers that did work on TV, so I don't know. They're out there. So you can see the larger parcel with the smaller one next, but you can see the creek, dry creek, running through the parcel in the northern portion. And then the other portion, the other parcels, a little bit further down Loop Road. So as I think this was mentioned, I think maybe Carrie mentioned this back in the June meeting. Our twenty forty envisioned Elon Comprehensive Plan has several recommendations throughout it for greenways and trails, particularly that follow sewer easements. Also, the twenty seventeen update to the bicycle pedestrian and lighting plan also mentions that. And then lastly, I didn't add this, but I spoke with Josh Johnson, who's our consulting engineer last week. And he was like, absolutely, this would be great, because worst case scenario, we could use the vacant undeveloped land for stormwater credits for the state, stormwater nutrient credits. Even if we were to do a trail, the remaining portion of the property that's undeveloped can also always count towards stormwater credits. So it's something else to think about. Um, so I think that's all that I really have to present to you, unless Rich has anything else, and I think you have a tag team on this one. So again, they're just asking for the town to consider the donation of those three parcels.
I'll just say that the two to the north are adjacent to the stream. And there's nothing remarkable about either of them. The the larger one does have a, you can tell there's a sewer line there, because it's cleared. The one, the southerly one butts up against the stream at the very end. It is all wooded. We didn't try and go down the the slope down to the stream. Not very far anyway, and again, it's, there's nothing necessary remarkable about that property either, other than some wetlands at the back end.
Would you go to the next side? Just, I believe the next side has the.
Flood plain.
Yes, and as we talked about, there's the larger parcel is primarily floodway and floodplain. And the the smaller parcel next to it just has some floodplain. And then the parcel on the south side is split. It's actually got some developable land, and then it's got some floodplain in it as well.
You're saying it's a dry creek bed, but that floodplain represents what a.
The name of it is Dry Creek.
Oh, the name is Dry.
The name of it's Dry Creek, because I was wondering if it was Travis Creek or Tributary, and then finally I had to do some digging to figure out. No one seemed to know what that creek was called. So no, there's, there's water running in it, so yes. The name of it's Dry Creek. Interesting name, because it was not dry in the east, and I can't imagine it ever being dry, because it's a pretty wide.
Kind of the same concept as Greenland.
So, and I appreciate your work you've done on this. So in reading it, there's some restrictions about building or creating a walkway or greenway over the sewer line where you couldn't go six inches deeper. And it is now, and you couldn't go fifteen inches higher. You had to elevate, and there's certain limitations, like, you know, I know there's greenways and walkways and a lot of different places. I guess the question would be is, if we did accept this property. What expense, other than have to construct a plaque, would we obligated you down to? Right? I mean, there's no remediation that we know of, right, Rich? You didn't see.
No, there's, we didn't see any, any garbage dump down there, other than, you know, a couple of inside cups kind of a thing. There's no evidence of anything we could see. Certainly, the top two, can't imagine anybody would have built. I mean, it looks, it looks pretty undeveloped, undisturbed for a long period of time.
The other question I had was, the other parcel that that's just south. That's a large parcel, eleven acres. That's all wooded land owned by someone, right? Would would the greenway have to, how would the greenway connect? Where would it go to from these these two properties?
That is common open space from, is it Forest Creek? Is that the name of the subdivision? Forgive me, I'm still learning subdivisions. Just to the west. So it is their common open space. Um, so if we wanted to make a connection, an ideal connection would be coming through there and connecting those three parcels. Potentially connecting into the subdivision, but there would be some creek crossings there, potentially one, maybe two. So then you're talking about adding expenses, right, staying out of the floodplain. So.
With the continuation of a of a of a greenway.
Yes.
Towards Robin Hood Drive and so forth. Where would that fall? Would it fall on the sewer easement? Is the city of Burlington controls on.
To work with Burlington to find out exactly where that easement lies, on which side. Does it cross that creek at any point? Because I'm just not sure where the sewer lines are, and we didn't have that data readily available.
I guess that's why I was just trying to assess what the risk could be financially. If we did nothing.
If we did nothing, no risk, in my view. There are, we talked about, you know, future potential benefits in terms of open space, trails, what have you. I hadn't even thought about Josh's comment about stormwater credits, that, you know. That that's a, that's a tangible benefit as we do other things in town.
Yeah, I think the tax value of county is very nominal. Properties are probably less than fifty thousand.
I could, we can look it up if you want. I don't know offhand. Certainly, the the top two have minimal value because of where they're situated.
Floodplain, you couldn't build there.
Yeah, so those are going to be, you know, in the. Something, the one to the south might have a little bit higher value, because there is some upland with it. But none of these are are significantly valued properties that I'm aware of.
Going back to stormwater nutrient credits, I should have remembered this from a previous jurisdiction where I worked. They had maxed out the impervious limitations at a park. But then we, the county owned another parcel, and they could transfer that right to that parcel, as long as that wasn't developed. So they can add to their parking lot on a separate parcel miles away. Um, so like I said, if you're talking about not improving it as far as any type of greenways or trails, nutrient and stormwater credits are a great way to go. Or at least to have that in your back pocket to keep it for the future.
Alright.
You didn't give us any options tonight, right? We're not going to vote on this till the next time.
No, we need to.
I just didn't see the options. See, we should have options.
I put them at the bottom. It's to refuse the land donation, to request additional information that you might be moving back, or to accept the land donation. Be in compliance with North Carolina General Statute one sixty D.
Oh, I see the, it was in the middle of the page. Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you. I know, it's not, I'm not used to, it's always right before the attachments.
Got you. Yes, there was, I think normally we don't add comments in the administrative comments, but Carrie had them in there, and I kind of wanted to carry them over because I thought they were relevant.
And Marty, to answer your question about values, the three parcel, the big one's about twenty six thousand. The little one's about five, and the one at the bottom is about eleven, plus forty two thousand dollars.
I move that we accept.
Have a motion. Do I have a second? Any other questions, comments? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Thank you, Lori. Moving on to new business, I'm, just for reference, it is. Today, so I do want to be respectful of individuals' time today. For anyone who really shouldn't be working today, because it is a religious holiday, so. Yes.
I'm here. I don't know about anybody else.
So new business consideration. Consideration of amendment to water and sewer billing process?
Uh, this is, when we went to monthly billing, we had said that we would monitor it in the first issues we, so we do to figure them out. The first step we took was we shortened our process to get the bills out the door. And we have still running issues with the postal service delaying in the hell where it needs to be. So what we are proposing is a change in the schedule. So that instead of bills being due fifteenth of the month, we would move that to the twenty first of the month. And instead of the the link, and so I think not paid at the twenty first with the five dollar late fee. We have had a, on the twenty sixth, traditionally, we have had a twenty dollar delinquent fee, which needs to shut off. Posed that to the first. Gives everybody not quite a full week, but gives gives more time to get bills in on time and delivered and get them paid on time. We made some other adjustments to some of the language that didn't make sense anymore, since we're now on a. On a monthly basis. The one caveat is that if somebody is going into a delinquent status as of the twenty sixth, it will not show up in the bill. It gets mailed out on for the first, because we'll be doing our bills prior to the twenty sixth. Try and make that a clear statement on the bill, so that arguments don't ensue, somebody then pays their bill, not the twenty dollars. We registered as not a complete payment. So we will try and make sure that that language is clear. That's the only downside to this.
I will say that our staff has done a really good job of handling these complaints when people have not been very nice to them. So having witnessed that and heard about it. Um, I think that we need to do what we can to support our staff through this. It's not necessarily, it's going to make it easier, I think, when, you know, the the post office doesn't deliver the mail in a timely manner, but it's also going to support our staff who is on the receiving end when someone's water gets cut off because the bill is not paid or they're assigned a delinquent fee. So I think that. Really speaks to the importance of us learning from, you know, when we transition from every other month to every month. And then our timeline, and this is just kind of, I think, fixing some of that to support the staff.
Mayor, I I agree and appreciate the work you're doing. One question I would have is, what percentage of our citizens pay online? Not that everybody's going to do that, because I know people, people don't do that, and we have to comment with that, but what did you say?
I don't know. I don't, I can't guess on that. What I've talked to who with complaints pays online. They want to mail it or or something like that, you know, they, for whatever reason, they don't, they don't trust online or. Information now.
That's fine. I I would just like to make sure that we try to educate, make people aware that that is an option. Don't depend on US Postal Service to be your reminder. Abilities to do that. Not everybody's going to do that, but that's fine. But I commend you. I think that's a great step.
Implementations would start with the first bill, which also will have the newsletter, so there's going to be a write-up in there. We could actually, we could probably even do a. You know, slide by slide, step by step, doc, demonstration of how to register for, you know, online bill payment. Or if you want to have it, have it directly debited from your account, which we have quite a few people who do that. Bill is registered and we notify the bank and they send the money. So there are different ways to accomplish that. But go pay it through our our venue online, through their bank, yeah, online. Lot of avenues.
Yeah, I agree. Some additional education, I think, is always helpful. As the person who still drives their bill in a check up here and drops it in the box.
You like coming up here every day, so I guess.
I do, I do.
A Venmo account, maybe that would help.
I'm sure you could. Other businesses have them. Well, we could go door to door. Their neighbors. Um, do we need to vote on? Um, do we need to vote on this? It's a billing policy, is that something that we actually approve or is that an administrative policy?
It's to approve the amendments.
I, I think you have voted on this in the past.
Is that customary for a board to vote on an administrative policy?
It's a collection of services, I would almost think, changing policy. I, I could see no harm.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, but I just.
Yeah.
It, it's, perhaps it's. Unless the, unless the documentation of the policy as opposed to. We endorsing, changing or changing what we're trying to do. I, I guess that's how I look at it. If this was a minor text change, I wouldn't worry about it.
All right, so I have a motion from council member Orwig, do I have a second?
Second, that mayor.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Uh, next acceptance of N C D O two multimodal transportation grant. We love free money. Everybody.
A lot of time on.
So, um. Actually, he's got reverse order. I, I, I was, in my mind, I was doing the budget amendment last, after your acceptance of the grants. Cause with the guy comes the change, amending the budgets. But, well, you, you know, we can vote on that same.
But we didn't, we didn't vote on the resolution, but we can accept the grant and then put the resolution or the, yeah.
We put off the amendment, right? Yeah, you didn't, you didn't have it in hand.
Right, that's what I mean, so can we accept these tonight or do we have to wait?
Do you have the resolution for this particular one? Because we're kind of behind on the timetable for getting this resolution approved. So I did draft it, I'm hoping it was in your packet.
Yeah, there's a resolution of support attached there.
Okay.
Could they adopt the resolution without the budget amendments? We could at least move forward.
And, and the resolution of support is supporting sending in the application and everything, or is it actually accepting it?
No, it's, it's accepting it, so, and just really quickly, Rich already touched on this. So back in March, um, the previous planning director unbeknownst to staff, applied for this multimodal grant. And we were just notified that we were awarded, um, the grant and it was her goal to present a resolution in April. She was no longer with the town, um, so I need to get a resolution approved by both the town council and the Burlington Grand Metropolitan Planning Organization. Um, and so I think as Rich said, it's an amount of sixty thousand, forty-eight thousand comes from N C D O T, twelve thousand would be a, uh, local match requirement. Um, and that this is just a very important plan for Elon, it will focus on bike, pedestrian and transit. Um, and then even more important, I think than that, is having this plan in place will assist when we apply to N C D O T for stip funding state transportation improvement. Did draft the resolution because it should have, typically, these resolutions are done well in advance of being notified that you were approved.
Yeah.
The application.
A resolution of support for application and commitment to match grants, so it's not actually accepting.
And reading through it, it doesn't say accepting, it does say that. And if selected, the town will provide matching funding up to twenty percent. So if you want to approve that resolution tonight, that's fine, and then we'll, we'll bring the budget amendment back, uh, along with the vote. Accept the grant funds.
I'll make that motion, mayor. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Motion second. Um, any comments, questions? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? And carries. Next, acceptance of lead copper assessment grant from Department of Environmental Quality. Present.
I will.
Um. We had submitted, a couple months ago, you had done a resolution for grants for this, to the state. Part of this application. And this grant will provide us. Three hundred thousand dollars that we can use to evaluate our water distribution system, identify lead copper within the system. And develop plans or remediate it and, uh, and complete planning. The mapping of our distribution system. So. Anyway, so I, I, I think it's, uh, it'll be a benefit to us, allow us to. Demonstrate that we're, we're moving forward with, with any issues that we identify. And down the road, we will see remediation projects included. As, as, as needed.
Just quick question, do we have any idea what magnitude it costs? Three hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money, but if it's a three million dollar, you know, cost. And that's every mediation, to correct those, those issues, or is just to evaluate? I guess I'm trying to understand.
Th- this is not to remediate.
Okay, so it's just to do that.
To do the assessment, analysis, fear of what the issues are that we have. We know that there are some areas of, for instance, we know there's some lead sodders in our waterways. Bracket them with our testing. Uh, we do testing at houses. I think there's a hundred and twenty homes that we suspect are an area where we did, we have, have lead fittings. We don't know where those are. This will allow us to, to map and identify one subtle, it'll focus our testing regiment a little bit. And it'll, and then it'll tell us, and we need to do these things remediate. Some of them could be as simple as replacing fittings within, you know, in the street. Uh, or the meter boxes perhaps, or things like, some might be more extensive and we just don't know.
So it's just to identify those, those problems.
Yep.
And we have, if we don't spend it, then obviously we have to return it.
Yeah, we'll have to three hundred thousand dollars for this project and I, and I suspect that that will be, you know.
Would, would already those, those facilities or properties be prior to nineteen sixty construction?
Likely, yes.
That would be targeted.
I, I don't know the age exactly, but it's, it's certainly the older systems. I know, well, I would say even into the early eighties, because I know. I got one of those bottles on my doorstep to test for lead, you know, and that was in the mid eighties or early eighties when that neighborhood was built, so. Not that you couldn't get it after a certain date. But this is, the, the suspicion is a lot of plumbers were still using up what they had.
Yeah, I think to me, it's a kind of a. Obvious decision.
So would you like to make a motion?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? And carries. All right, thank you very much, everybody, town manager report.
Uh, just note to everybody to check the recreation park website, there's a calendar for ongoing activities for the coming weeks in the month. There is no music to die to this Friday night. I think it was not scheduled because this weekend is also family weekend at the university. So, uh, just know that there's an awful lot of activities being planned downtown. And last thing I have is this Thursday night at six P M is the community life center at the Elon Congregational Church. Elon Community Church. Is our third neighborhood meeting. Ask residents to come and tell us if we're doing well, what we need to improve on, what we do too much of, or what we don't do enough of. So that'll be our, our third meeting. We'll then catalog all those comments and, um, for you folks to come up with replies on behalf of the town that we can use as we move forward.
Thank you, moving on to council reports, we'll start with Randy.
We had our, uh, church had their dog day mixer and, uh, and I watched very carefully how the ingredients of that took place with where the picnic tables are. It looks like all of our activity was, was, was away from the picnic tables. And, but we had some of our people sitting and resting on picnic tables, but it was not our activity that was happening. So that was encouraging for me in terms of future activity. And, uh, and I'm, I'm still excited, I think that one of the things that, that we are kind of not thinking about too is that. The plaza is going to be built soon. That's going to make a big difference. I, I mean, it's going to add to what we're going to be able to do and I'm really looking forward. Trying to gear up as well with the green space to try to add, add a little more luster to it and stuff to, to, to be able to do that, so. I'm still concerned about the, uh, sustainability committee and I have been putting the word out to try to get volunteers. I don't know if they're, if they find the, the committee process daunting or if they just not going to the website. I, you know, I keep saying they, where they have to go and I'm trying to get them there, so.
And I have.
You want to get this, you have, you're up to three.
I have three new.
So we really would like to get three new ones or three total.
Three total.
Yeah, see, we need, and we wanted to have five, I think, right? Yeah, so, so we're still working on that and that's probably when, yeah, again, I just want to get. Partly, you know, the, the, when the resolution wasn't passed and then, of course, the pandemic just took the wind out of the sails of that, of some of the folks. And, and as we rebuild, I'm just trying to get these people back in place, so, but we'll get there. So that's pretty much my report, I just want to say thank you to all the, the hard work that's, that's going on. Jill's doing a, a great job trying to really put all of this stuff together with social district and some of the, uh, activities she's got planned. And, uh, we're hopeful to have a community support trunk or treat that's going to happen on October thirtieth. That sounds now like the police want to do one on the thirty-first. So I got a call from them, so, yeah, that was news to me, so, uh, we'll, we'll check on that, but, uh. But we were just looking to see if the parking lot would be available and they might do something, I don't know.
Okay.
Maybe we can.
Wrap that into one, or so Rick is doing something on Friday.
Right.
The town is going to.
Yeah, I was surprised too to get that.
That would be all.
Anyway, I'm still acting on itself. And, uh. It for me.
Yeah, if we can see about having that all integrated, like the downtown events somehow. All right.
Well, we'll see what we can do.
News, see, that was news to me, that they wanted to do it on the.
Yeah, that's kind of odd.
They're going to actually on Halloween, that's. Maybe they're, maybe they've got something in mind to try to mitigate issues or something.
Um, yeah, I want to reiterate with Rich, I appreciate those folks who showed up for the last two meetings for the community. I, I found them, um, who had a good dialogue, uh, you know, it wasn't a, a large crowd, so I hope some people who have been hesitating. Show up for our last one, um, we welcome input and we like to hear feedback. You may not have the answers that, right, there are most students, but surely want to hear, but it's a board. I want to thank the journalism class and professor, uh, Don Hugh for bringing your class here. Now, there's other places you'd rather be than here, but we appreciate your attendance. It's always nice to have people in those seats. And you see what the local government's all about, so appreciate having you here.
Thanks to the staff, I'm glad, uh, we finally got the social district pass and looking forward to the next stuff. Thanks for coming out, talking to us and addressing your concerns and the journalism class. The last Friday, the, uh, music done too was awesome, it was a great time, you know, I have a four-year-old that loves to run rapid around there, so it's, it's great to see her. Be able to do that, you know, that's, that's thanks to our town and, and our staff for allowing Elon to be a safe environment for us to, to do that. This Saturday, uh, in downtown Burlington is Aliments Pride's, uh, event, if it doesn't get rained out. They haven't done it since COVID started, so it's looking to be a big event and fun, so if you're available on Saturday, I think it's from noon to six. That, that should be a fun time. And I'm also, early voting is going to start, I'll say it again, um, on August or October twentieth. And if you haven't registered to vote, you can go ahead and register vote, you can also register a vote on, um, early voting. And Elon has their own early voting site that's going to happen, so that's going to be awesome, we haven't had one. Aliments and. So having another opportunity to, to get people to the polls and maybe a, not a presidential election, but a midterm election, but it is a very important one, so make sure you ask that.
Have they said where that early voting site will be?
Yes, this is South Jim.
Okay, that's where they did the, uh, the vaccination clinics.
And as we get into October. We'll talk internally about trying to make sure that's getting out on our sites as well. Probably too late for the, we can put in the newsletter, there'll only be a day or so, by the time people get the newsletter, but, uh. We'll support that.
A, a day or so.
Once they get it.
The newsletter didn't go out to the first. I won't do it in the newsletter, but we'll, other ways through social media and stuff.
All right.
Okay, so I'm between you guys leaving, so I'll make this brief. Um, I just want to say, normally I wouldn't be here, it's Rosh Hashanah, so those of you who celebrate Rosh Hashanah, the Jewish New Year, Lashon Atova. Normally I would not be here, I've been in, in services all day, but I do think it's important to serve our community, which is part of Rosh Hashanah. My family goes and picks apples because that's part of the tradition. Apples in hand makes for a sweet New Year, so if anybody does pies, because these suckers are tiny. To them, we, we did plenty, but one thing about Rosh Hashanah that people may not be aware of is, everybody thinks for Jews, it's Hanukkah, it's not Hanukkah. These are the high holy days, the next ten days are our, our most holy days, um, till Yom Kippur, which is the day of atonement. So one thing that our family does is, we apologize to each other, we try and be better people, we try to set this New Year right. So I want to apologize, I know Monty's like, never thought I'd hear that from Stephanie. To my fellow council members, to our staff, to our wonderful manager, our clerk, everybody that is here. For anything that I might have done to you over the last year, um, I ask for your forgiveness and whatever things you've done. It's a long, long list, but that's the great thing about having a Jewish New Year is we get to start the New Year right. So it is the year fifty-seven eighty-three. The Jews have been doing this for a long time, hopefully get it right at this point. But thank you all for all your service that you do, thank you all for being here and being part of our community, which means please go out and vote. Um, and thank you all for tonight, and with that, hopefully. We can call it a day, huh?
I just have a couple of things, I will be fast.
Sorry, Mary, I didn't mean to cut you off.
What? I'm gonna, I'll hold this item to the next meeting, it's not important. Um, I did attend the North Carolina Mayors Association meeting last week in Greensboro, which was. A great opportunity to hear from other mayors and meet with them and lots of grants, so I'm going to keep pushing more grants, that's what we need. Um, and also just a reminder, um, about the community meeting that Rich shared. Jill, if you will add an actual event to the Facebook page so that we can each collectively go in there and actually invite people to it, I think that that has helped. I can't say for sure, but I created one under mine, but I think it'd be better if it was like the town of Elon's event versus my event. Um, and then we can all, if everybody will go in and invite all their local friends, um, on Facebook to come. And of course, all of you, as if tonight wasn't enough, if you want to join us again on Thursday, um, we will be there.
And we have refreshments.
Yes, and some snacks. Um, so, yeah, so feel free to join us at six P M at Elon Community Church. Um, that is all, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Who?
A second. All in favor, say aye. Being adjourned, thank you, everyone.
We, we apologize for talking.
Please, anybody base?